Everybody's good? We'll have the Lord pray and we'll get started. Thank you Father for all your blessings, Father. We come asking you to give us wisdom on this day. Help us to make good decisions and good planning for our upcoming meeting. And Father, we ask you to bless our nation. And we pray that everything will go smoothly tomorrow. And help us to just be in the right, Father. In Jesus' name we pray, amen. Alright. So, this is our work session, we're planning. I think you mentioned to me about Ms. Janet Racing coming. Is there anything you want to say to the commission or you want? Need to explain the situation?
So what Ms. Janet, they have a section 450. It's county and railroad. But it's just one of those spots, it's steep hill. It's always washing, it's always, it's about half asphalt, about half gravel at this point. And where we come on, they're what they're kind of asking is for the county to pay for some concrete. And they would have a crew doing some labor.
Actually, it would be Keith. Keith would go in and grade and get it ready. And then if the county puts the concrete down.
And I'll tell you, I talked to Keith about this. My concern is the railroad. Where it's at, there's just quick pulling, where I'm not able to take a step. There's about forty foot that's from the bridge up to the railroad railway that would be ours without having to ask. The rest of it is on railroad railway. So we would have to have some railroad involvement to do that section.
Originally, right now it has asphalt on top. And that is because of the railroad. The railroad themselves were concerned with the safety of coming over that hill and being right there at the track because it is such a steep terrain. So they actually put asphalt on there, which is great when they first do it. But we have so much traffic through there with UPS, FedEx, and then the mail lady. And coming, it gets to a point where the asphalt breaks down. And then going up that hill is a tremendous problem. And if you gas it, you run the risk of, now that we've got two other people that are living on that side of the railroad, they come in front and they turn right there to the left. So therefore, if you come and you gas it up over the top of that hill, good chance you could hit someone. So it's a safety issue for the mail lady as well as anybody else that's coming out of that area.
And your charge lady.
Well, I mean, what they're wanting to do would fix it, but there's got to be railroad involved. And so, Ms. Cobb says you would.
I'm gonna reach out to the railroad company. Bless your heart. Thank you too for all of your work. I'll reach back out with him and see if he'll come out and meet with us and we'll discuss it. Because it, we're, it's, what's ours is not going to do this unless we get the railroad company on board. Which it has to be both of us or it will not work. So I'm gonna reach out to him and see if I can set something up.
Okay, perfect.
Wherever that line is, if that's two hundred, eight hundred foot mark, I'd make sure I put a joint there.
As much as he leaves you on the other side, and me and I have so many conversations, maybe he'll feel bad about it and do this for us. I'm thinking that as well. But it helped that we just bought land on the other side. So the, they have surveyed it and so we know exactly where the line is and set for.
Didn't we try this one time before and our attorney was talking about liabilities and all this bunch of stuff?
We have asked. And that's kind of why I'm saying that railroad would have to be their portion and we would have to be our portion. We would need to stay off of railroad.
But you're talking about letting a private citizen do work on our road.
Well, it's not, it's not that, I mean, they would get approval from your county. It wouldn't make no difference than putting in, you know, having a bridge between any of them though. It's a contractor, it's a licensed contractor. He is a licensed contractor. He's not a little.
He is a licensed.
So everybody, right now, so right now, Ms. Cobb, you're gonna take the initiative and speak to the railroad folks. And you'll try to work out something. Then if we need a resolution, just be prepared. Do we need something prepared now?
No, it's just, we'll be, we'll be.
And find that water, she does.
Okay, alright. Alright, John, you got anything? Ms. Fuller?
Yes, I do. I do have something. I gave a letter to Ryan concerning the back pay that was an error way back when. I gave him a letter this afternoon and I'll share that with you all through an email as well. Just trying to get that taken care of. And I did have an attorney look into that. And there is a two-year back pay, I think limitation from an attorney general's opinion back in 2013. So I'm gonna move forward with that. But I would like for y'all to look at those last two years. Fix that, the base pay and my salary to fit those amounts. Pay the back two years and we'll move forward from there. But I would like for y'all to do that at the end of next week.
Alright, do you want to put this?
I'd like to.
Consent or new business?
Consent, Father.
Everybody good, consent? Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Fuller. Crystal, 911 and EMA, do you have anything? We talked about possibly because we meet lately and I sent all that to you next, not this week, if, if the following week, December 13th, at five. Talked to Crystal about possibly skipping the 911 meeting, we don't have to have eighty years' warranty.
I consent.
Everybody good with that? Alright, we don't have any big issues or anything?
I consent.
Okay, so we'll, we'll have a 911 meeting, so we'll start at five. One thing, and I think I'd heard, understood, Tanya, you had a professional photographer come in at one time, at some time for the wedding?
Um, just, I can give you an update on the website stuff.
Yes, I was planning to ask you that. What I was, I guess I was asking, you all gonna need to make a group picture of the lane and for the kind of location. I don't know if y'all usually do that on the Wednesday before, are they suggesting that ACC on the Wednesday before or later in December? So I don't, when do you have a schedule for that?
I don't have a schedule.
You don't have a schedule? Okay, well just, I don't know, y'all need to talk about that, how y'all want to do that for your upcoming photos. If you want to dress up for the next meeting, let's do it the next week. On the 13th? Mark? Mark's good. I mean, we've just taken them to the phone before for the ACC.
Yeah, that's fine.
And Lane, you good?
If you can follow up anything, Tanya, with your person, if they can notice, if we do it all at the same time or not, you what?
It probably will not be that quick.
Okay, well then why don't you do it with fun?
Jenny, I mean, Janet, I was just thinking, if you want to slip away, you can.
I can.
I know you don't want to miss this fun, are you? We have a lot of fun.
Thank y'all. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for coming. Tell Keith to do some work, okay? Tanya, you want to update us on your?
On the website, so I have a quote from Willingham Creative. That was the gentleman who met with us. And I have a quote from Red Sage. This is both for, each of them have both submitted proposals for branding and for website development. But I felt like I needed to get one more for you guys, just to look at because there is a drastic difference. So I wanted to get one more and that is from WideNet, who is located in Cowan County. And they, they work in a lot of places. So I have been talking to him and I should have his proposal by, he said by lunch tomorrow. For, I have his proposal for branding, but for his website, for that. And then once I get that, then I will email it to everyone and with a, with, okay, so I'll have a little polling for you to pick. And then a certain amount of days for you guys to review that, those proposals.
Ryan?
Yes, sir.
On this right here, is this something that's, it needs to be an open or closed, man? She just didn't read the process, it's okay, she just takes her three processes, how's that?
What's our amount?
If it's less than fifty thousand dollars, you don't have to pay it.
Okay.
It's less.
You don't think it's gonna be fifty thousand, do you?
No.
It's gonna be fifty thousand, I heard.
No!
The thing that is, this website's gonna cover the whole Canada, we've been after for a while. I think it's, I know we was in the meeting that day and I think, I think all of our staffs are on board with what we're gonna get in return. So it's not gonna be free either.
I really appreciate y'all, everybody met their deadlines, the first one that I gave them. And everybody got their wish list in. I failed to meet mine, just because I felt like I need to get another, another one for you guys to look at. So I will get that to you guys this week. So you will get, you can start looking at them and then we'll move forward. But yeah, so that's the update on the website. Other things happening this week and I can update you guys along, it's been a lot of time. We spent a day in Ramberg with the mayor down there and we kind of have some thoughts and plans going forward there. I hope, I've put in a call to Fruithurst and I just haven't received a phone call back. So if you go nudge him, that would be great, so we can move forward with visiting there. I've kind of kept you guys abreast of some projects that we have going on. And then Laura and Emmett and I are going to the Rural Economic Development Summit that's put on by the Department of Commerce. We are leaving, going to Wednesday, Thursday, Friday for that. We'll be in South Alabama.
Any other questions for Tanya?
Thank you.
Thank you. Alright, Emily, you have anything? Now you read this by, talk about this a minute, you read this by Jason?
Yes, that, that is a resolution that, that needed some editing done to it. And so Chad Robertson sent me what we needed, he sent me a sample of everything. And I sent that to Jason and this is Jason's draft. So I still don't know, there may still need to be some edits made, but this is the draft as of right now.
Yes, sir.
Have you talked to Chad, Chad seen this?
I emailed it to him, I haven't spoken with him yet.
See, when I spoke to him, he said we needed the starting salary now. And we also needed, everybody needed to sign it. So can you let us know, are you here for Chad?
I will.
Okay.
Do you even want to put a form of this on the agenda so that it can pass something?
Yeah, because that's what my next question is gonna be, we're probably gonna have to vote on this again.
Yeah. Why don't we put this and it can be amended? Y'all give that?
That's fine.
Y'all put it on new business?
If they do, should they get that for what he wants?
I should be able to, yes.
We'll put this on new business now?
It started out, it wasn't simple for me, but I said, no, send it to Chad. And Chad said, send me what you got. I sent the resolution, he said, no, that's not our word. So then he sent me a sample of what he wanted and I said, you just need to deal with anything. Because what he was wanting, he was running back and forth, sixty times over here.
But basically, the overall conversation was they wanted what the starting pay was for the sheriff and for that. And it's just gonna be, the starting pay will be the seventy grand.
The only thing I saw on there that me and he and I talked about was not a starting pay on there and it's not a place for everybody to sign. He was real adamant about, he wants everybody's signature on it.
Are you just voting on it, I think? Yes, sir.
That's good. I'll sign it, my father.
Alright, any other questions for Emily, Brian?
Hey, we, do we need to do a resolution? We task her for coming up with this uniform form for job evaluations or performance evaluation, I guess. Do we need a resolution to say this is what the department has to use?
I would say that fact, I would say you'd want a resolution if that's what you want the department heads to use.
Okay, we need a resolution for that, here's a copy of it.
That way you, so it'd be, this is what you want them to use, you're asking them to use, 'cause.
We task her the last week to come up with one.
I think that's a good idea.
Concerned, gentlemen. Some concerned, gentlemen.
Everybody good, consent, consent to you? Yes, sir.
Clay, on yours, yours is going on an iPad, is it, Lane? Is y'all just printed out or y'all did, y'all did the, on an iPad with the app? Or you just?
Yeah, we can just exhale.
Okay.
Probably have a tail for every boy. So you just go, and all the blue information stays the same, it's saved, so you just print it out.
Okay.
Is this not something, it's put in everybody's record, you have to have a picture of it?
Okay. I think we've covered everybody in the audience. If you guys are gonna do your pictures on Wednesday, it'd probably be a good idea to meet at least a half an hour ahead. Go ahead and meet at four thirty, so you can do your photo. Mark, you, I don't, you might want to see if I can get somebody to swear you in. I'm happy to do if you want me, if you've got somebody special you want to swear you in for next week.
You do?
Okay, I'll get the paperwork ready and everything. And I think, Ms. Cobb, you got something worked out with Warren?
I've got a call in, but yeah.
Okay.
Next week.
Yes, and then the paperwork for their bonds to be bonded. We got that, go. You ain't never had a chance, you never done that before, have you, Lisa? That's okay, you hadn't. We need, you renew your bond?
You two guys, yeah, that can't even do you two guys, so.
She said, yeah, y'all should have done it.
Yeah, we have to do a bonding. We'll get it taken care of.
Okay, so that'll be ready on that evening, or at least before that day. Alright.
Meeting times?
Yeah, we want to set meeting times next week, well, I mean.
Well, I mean, Mark will just set it down, she can have it on the consent agenda and we just move on.
Yeah, I think it was a good idea.
So we did the signing.
Oh, so that's a, do you like it that way?
No, I don't like what we got now. I'd rather have a work session at ten o'clock in the morning.
Oh, well, I don't, you're welcome, as long as we keep it two weeks apart, I like that.
Maybe we got the department heads that have to come after they get off to work.
Okay, this final night.
For the work session at ten o'clock?
That's what I'd rather do.
I'd rather do.
How about, Mark, how about you?
Sounds good, man. Okay.
So what is this, what is the suggestion? Have you, your work session at ten?
Ten.
On the first Monday?
Ten, on the first Monday, and then the third Monday, I guess at four thirty. Well, it'd be five o'clock with commission at four thirty for emergency communication.
Which, still be two weeks apart, but you just move the work session ten o'clock in the morning?
Yeah. It might get easier, I think, if we don't have the compound involved and stuff like that.
Okay. Alright, we'll go ahead and put that on the agenda.
It's on the agenda.
Okay. Consent good with that? Okay. Alright, I'll let you go ahead.
Okay. Shane with East Alabama has reached out to me and says that Heflin is interested in getting our van and doing their own rail transit program. Says they will pay twenty percent of the fair market value, which is what that's set up, the way we would have had to pay for it is the same thing they have to do. So he suggested that we find a way to get a fair market value on that and get with Heflin on getting that swapped over.
Y'all to vote on that, say that, will you?
Shane with East Alabama reached out and he was interested, he says that Heflin is interested in pursuing the van for us, says they can do the transit program for people in Heflin. And they will pay twenty percent of what the van's fair market value is, which is the way, this is what, East Alabama has that set up, because what we have to do is we'll write twenty percent.
I thought we've been down this road, we don't own the van, we.
But we can give a twenty percent back of whatever the market value is, because we did pay that down, so.
I know that, but we don't, what I was told was we can't sell it or we can't stop them, so. So it's really, you should be appealing to them, not to us.
But I think he's just wanting us to kind of work it.
Is he asking for an okay for us to?
He's, he's asking that we reach out to somebody to earn market value on the van and then work with Heflin if this is swapped over.
Which we can, we can reach out to what, first models or we can approach him?
Would he, would he not be in a blue boot type of situation?
He suggested, he suggested sometimes banks will do it, sometimes dealerships will do it, he threw a couple of suggestions out there, but.
Okay.
A lot of times, a lot of times when it comes to stuff like that, you can just change, you can just change the open, as long as it's inside the channel and it's going to another, another entity.
So Lee's saying he didn't have to be passed to do that, that he can, he can just do that.
I'll tell you a question, I'll just get a quote.
Make sure it's cleaned up, not pulled away.
Alright, we'll get on that.
Get on that, moving on.
Okay, I've started reaching out to some of the banks about CD rates and I've got two of them, the CD, we have a CD right now that matures on December the 29th. So very soon, we'll have some part of numbers to work with, because you know they can change all the way back until we're ready to change over. But right now, Noble actually has a little bit better rate than our seven month CD. And then that's the highest, is it a sector seven month CD? Then Metro, they're pretty close, they're within just a tiny bit of each other. So I'm still waiting on rates from another bank and also on some of the interest rates for the checking accounts. So I'll get back with you on my recommendation on that, to see if I get the rest of those numbers together. I should probably have those by the next week, so I should be able to give that to you at the regular meeting. But that suggestion is.
A lot of times we talk about this, if it's a bank outside, depending on how far we gotta drive to the deposit, that thing, would we be able to, if it's pretty close, to be able to stay within our compound?
You can, and two, the FDIC doesn't insure us, so it's gotta be a bank that's, there's some kind of deal with the state. And I don't know what the letters are, it's like everything.
It's a safe framework.
But they gotta be in that system.
Yes.
And we can also, like you said, driving distance, we can use that to, to.
Well, I just, I just picked looking, I'm not gonna flip outside the CD.
Okay, that's kinda what you're saying, I understand.
And I was just going under the Metro and First Bank, just because they're all right here. But I've got, I've got some of the rents, I just don't have anything quite to get me in on that. But just so you're aware, that the CD does mature in December and we'll think about what we can do from there.
What about that credit union now, all structural, would that be?
It's gotta be in the state system to guarantee our money, because the Fed's done, it won't guarantee our money. So if it's out, if they're in that association or, I don't.
Yeah.
I don't remember what the name of it is.
There is a list, yeah.
But if they're in that, then you could consider, if they're not in that, I don't think it's a risk of money.
Right, well, I don't think you can, right.
I'd certainly reject the one, I mean, it's.
Finance, the financial care on that.
What are you looking at? Are you looking at seven or eight months or a year or?
On the CDs?
Yeah.
I actually just had written down what the best rate was and the best rates, like, one's at six months, one's at seven months. So they're not even wanting to insure them for a year. And I know that's the cause of the, of the political climate we're in right now, they're probably trying to be cautious about the longer terms. But they, they do have CDs that are voted for longer periods of time, but they're just a lower rate.
See, that works both ways, though. I mean, if we got something out for a year, even if it's not the best, within a year, it might be the best.
Yes, that's true.
So if we think the rate's gonna go down, we might need to lock something in for a year.
Sure.
Then if we think they're not, I mean, the Fed's having a hard time right now selling bonds, they have up their interest rate on seventy billion dollars they're trying to sell right now, it costs nobody to buy them.
Well, the rates I'm seeing are six and, six and seven months, or right at four and a half, four point six.
I mean, it's not a lot of money anyway.
Three and nine, I was a little, yeah.
You're talking a half a percent one way or the other, or even one percent, it's not a lot of money. Sometimes it's better to just lock it in.
You say lock it in for a year, then?
For a year.
Well, just look at all of them, but that's what I think you need to look at.
Alright, well, that's, that's all I have. And then Ryan, you said we have another speaker, I'm gonna remind you of that.
Yeah, Ms. Cobb's neighbor, James Owens wants to come and I've already talked to him about it being a short time talk and there's no sense in ranting and raving, just talk about what he needs to talk about. John, you ready? Because we had, we had to walk him out last time.
Yeah.
What's that road, what's that road?
Four thirty seven? Four thirty seven?
Yeah, four thirty seven.
Yeah, four thirty seven, if you'll put that, about four, can we?
We've had some new people moving in.
I was saying, just to click up, they know Martha, the water projects with Martha funds are done. They've spent everything, every dime of it. We have not reimbursed them yet for all of it, because they're kind of doing some vital bits of work, but the money, part of it's already done, Martha money, part of it's already done. So we should have a bill from them the next week, week and a half, and have that completely done. And Lisa's gonna explain to you, but we've got some left there, money on the road. And that was just, it's hard to, hard to make exactly how much something's gonna cost, so Lisa's gonna talk to you a little bit about that one too.
Some of the projects is coming in a little early.
Yes, it's.
Well, I can say.
Go ahead.
You might, you might have been exactly, round number, so what this is, this is under management projects, this is just what we've come in, this last, it's added up to eighty-three thousand and six, something. That's left on, at this point, there's not that kind of bid, we're out of seasonal limitations on maintenance fixed up, we're kind of down to about another extra, that's what we're putting. From an equipment needs standpoint, right now we have two sets of bush hog crews running with zero backups on the bush hogs or, or track. If anything goes down, we shut down. From a bush hog standpoint, we've got two running right now, but I've got one running and I've got one that was about to solid, just trying to keep it together. So that's kind of what my needs are. There is, what I was looking at is a massive person, it's a fifty-three sixty. I can get it for forty-two thousand. And then we were looking at twelve foot, that one bush hog, it's bush hog, professional strength, closed car top, solid tires, and it's should have a beautiful orbiting. Most of these is that, those fourteen-two apiece is what he's serving. The track and the bush hogs have adds up to eighty-four six hundred and cover a little bit of the road for my guest house now. My guest, my brother, my guest house now, my guest now. And that would wrap up the, the, the hospital.
And that, that's counting the twenty-two we have left for striping and all that, that's counting that, just to cover that.
That adds up with that too. That project's done too, you have some, that's kind of the measure, but only one single. And that's, and that's where we do the estimates, so I'm sitting there on paper putting this stuff out there and get out there and actually start doing it. And if you figured it twenty foot wide and you end up at nineteen and a half foot wide, you just, and we're successful, right?
But that is a solid numbers.
What we've got now, if you're talking.
So you need a resolution or something like that?
So it would be an offer, resolution.
New business, right?
Yeah.
Because you're, because this is just money that was left over from a project.
A little bit from.
All the projects.
Go ahead, I ain't gonna say all of them. Go ahead, I ain't gonna say all of them, but, yeah, it was a crap.
How could you have had money left over, we tried to beg you to put more asphalt.
I'm an house engineer, we just gotta lay down first.
I'm just questioning, I'm just questioning.
I'm gonna go with that, like, thank you for saving the money.
Look, I've got a road that's not even complete, okay?
We ain't got time for that, we just need to spend that money, we don't spend it by December, we're writing checks, sending it back, so.
I could have seen.
So y'all, we're gonna put that on new business, and y'all work this out between, for the resolution, okay?
And I do have details for it, so.
Is that all you, you had?
I was gonna ask a question.
Yes, sir, mister.
Uh, I met with Sherri Rollins with, uh, Mike Rogers' office last week, and, uh, and we've gone through, uh, trying to get some federal money from Brett's and Tuberville's office.
Yes, we have.
And, uh, but what she said is, is we really need to come through Mike Rogers, too, I'm just saying this, so we, make sure we're not missing out on something, but she said she ain't seen anything that Cleveland County's been asking for in the past two years, if we don't fill out that form behind everything we do, and the reason why I'm concerned about it, when I got through talking, or got thinking about it, is every year, you know, we usually take our money that we get from the federal building through towards water lines, but you've been pretty much on top of that, right? So I don't, so are we not applying, is there something that we're not applying for?
Oh, they're, they're applying, I mean, they apply through those water grants yearly.
That's, that's what I'm saying, but she, but I'm just saying, let me tell you, that she didn't say anything for us.
But also, we filled out the paperwork for the grant, you know, through, we went to Mike Rogers' office, to Tuberville's office, and to Katie Britt's office, well, they pushed us, you know, this project down to Katie Britt's office, it's. Yeah, yeah.
Move it to Rogers' head?
Let me ask you, let me ask you something, what y'all considering the water, which ain't that good, right?
It's through a decade, it has to come through a federal level, the money has to come down.
Go ahead, can I ask?
Yeah, I was gonna suggest, she may understand, go ahead.
Okay, what Sherri is talking about is federal appropriations, not grants, grants through federal agencies that go for water lines that go through a decade, that's, that's budgeted money that goes to the state that you apply for, but what Sherri is talking about is an appropriation, so what that is, is like, the, it's, the appropriate term is congressionally directed funding. So what you guys need to do, what I had promised, and I responded to Sherri this morning on the email, and I said, she had sent some, a link to some of the projects that they have funded through the appropriations, this is a yearly, this is a yearly budget process. So, and each, like Tuberville, um, Katie Britt, and Rogers' office has their own submission forms that they submit to each of the departments, okay? So, um, I will go through, in addition to what Sherri sent, I will go through and look at the different accounts that Congress is funding, so you guys can think about projects that you wanna possibly apply for. And then you will need to get together and decide, this is our priority that we wanna ask for, and what Sherri is saying is that Mike has not made an appropriations request for Cleveland County, um, in a very long time. So, um, and they just brought congressionally directed funding back about three, four years ago, so.
I went to, believe I went to Washington, we, and we filled those appropriation papers out, but they sent us to, uh, Katie Britt's office, is where we filled those papers out.
John Merle was helping you direct?
Right, John Merle was with us, and he helped, and that's where, and we met with Mike Rogers, we met with Tuberville, and we met, and then we went and met with Katie Britt, the project I pushed to Katie Britt, it's a million dollar project, it's, uh, bridges.
Did y'all get funded?
We're hoping, you know, they haven't released it yet, you know, it's probably.
Is that current, was it FY twenty five money?
It will be, yes, twenty five money.
Yeah, okay.
And then we also, I also filled out paperwork for the Sheriff's Department, uh, and I filled those out, but it, I filled those out through Tuberville's office. I did those online, and so.
Well, I guess, I, let me, let me look at what y'all sent.
The biggest thing, the biggest thing that she, I guess what she was saying is that it, because where he's at, you're talking about senators and our representative of Mike Rogers, so I guess what she was saying is it also means, but, but like you said, he sends you back to them. That's where I'm, so I'm just making sure that we knew the process, that we wouldn't miss something, because we need these police cars, and, uh, and I want to make sure that we all understand what she is saying. See, well, you too, Mark.
I think, I, I, sorry, go ahead.
No, no, I was gonna ask you, you understand the process, you worked at there a long time.
Yeah, she does.
So, um, there was a period of time when we all went to Washington a lot, and we got money appropriated through, through, uh, a lot for our water, but it was through Department of Conservation, and for some reason, it was coming through different departments, and then it kind of all stopped, but it started back in the last three, four years.
Yeah, so that was, that, I mean, just to give you an history, um, Republicans were in control of Congress, and then they decided to do away with congressionally directed earmarks, um, because there was lots of heat coming down, because of lobbyists, and, you know, inappropriate use, this was the, the bridge to nowhere, that the senator from Alaska, you know, got money to build a bridge to an ice tunnel, you know, these type of things.
And then what they were doing, when a bill was coming through, when a bill was coming through, they would do their pet projects in the bill, but a lot of the people who represented us would not throw money in there to get, they were against that, but they, they'd throw the pet projects for certain people, and we wouldn't live with nothing.
Yeah, so you, so, um, just, I, I am a fan of members of Congress being able to direct taxpayer monies back to their districts, so, um, each year, there is the, this process, and they have started bringing them back, like, um, when I worked for Main Street Alabama, I actually, we actually went, and we got seven hundred thousand dollar earmark through Mike Rogers' office to, um, do an entrepreneurial program that's being done by Main Street Alabama. So, there, the types of projects that you're looking at are, you know, let's say that you wanted to build an animal shelter, well, there is, you could get an earmark to build an animal shelter, if you, if, they felt compelled to put it at the top of their priority list. So each member gets a certain amount, and they get, they get priorities, they set their priorities, who they wanna fund that year, um, and they try to spread it around, and so what Sherri is saying is Mike has not been able to do that, or they haven't afforded, they haven't seen anything, I guess, I don't know. And I don't know your, I don't know your history, so, did, did you get money for police cars?
Well.
Through Tuberville's office last year?
We, we thought we did, but still on the home.
Yeah, I think it's gonna be like February or March, I think the next year.
Okay, so still, what this may be, is what you're requesting, I don't know if they're, they're putting it through, uh, the appropriations process, or they're pushing it down through the grant process through the state.
Pushing it down.
So I, I mean, I'm gonna look into what you submitted.
It was appropriation, you know, it's, and, um, they seen, you know, they seen our need, especially on the bridge projects, because we had three bridges, and, um, they, you know, Lee and I sat with them for about an hour, and they were impressed with our project, and felt good about it.
Okay, so that came through Britt's office?
Yes.
Okay, and then Tuberville, we think, I, I can go back and look online, they'll show me, it'll show me if Cleveland County got money last year.
I filled the paperwork out for the Sheriff's Department, I did it after I got back online, um, the gentleman helped me walk right through it, and we just get through. And there's, so, you know, we thought that I already had it, but that guy had held it up until, I think, until the first year.
So I, I mean, again, I, what I'll do for you guys this year is, I, I will send you the type of projects that they are funding, so, all over the country, I'll send you some ideas in the different accounts, that, 'cause there are different committees, so there's Ag Approaches, there's, um, CJS, that's where your, um, money for these guys is coming from, there's Transportation Infrastructure, is where roads is coming from, there's water, uh, there's Interior, that's where trail money's coming from, or, you know, um, Conservation Funds, or things like that, that's coming from that, um. So there's different accounts, and there, there's something in each of those bills that they're doing earmarks on, so I can send y'all some projects, and then what you'll need to do is prioritize what you, as a county, want to put, to request for this year, and then I would recommend making that request across the board, and doing both, doing both the House side and the Senate side, and, and, and make sure that Mike and Katie and, and Tuberville, that all of them know what you're requesting.
And, and we felt like that day, that, you know, the three were included, we met with all three.
Sounds like you did the right thing.
Rogers' office worked to the, uh.
Support?
Support, or both, or both, Britt and Tuberville.
Yeah, so, I mean, it sounds like you did the right thing, yeah.
Well, I, I just wanted to make sure that all of us knew, because they, like Ryan said, we used to be able to get money years ago, and now all of a sudden, you couldn't get any of this kind of money, and then, we all, I wanna make sure that y'all know, especially out in the camp.
It's stopping in a bush.
Areas.
And it's like the water board right now, they're, they're facing a, to me, a, um, a possible crisis, you know, because they have, uh, the, the water line that's running through the north end that connects the school, and, um, there's no cutoff, they need, they need that cutoff out, to be able to separate that, or the school, if something happens to that line, it doesn't, you know, it doesn't completely shut down, uh, the school and the whole area.
Do you, so, let me ask this, do y'all have kind of a list of projects, like Lee, do you have a list of projects that, that have, like that, like infrastructure projects? Because what, you know, every ten years, they, they do an infrastructure bill, and then every, I think, every, I can't remember what it is now, but they do a water infrastructure bill, and they're is funding through those authorization acts, too, to get funding, but if you have a list of those priorities, and what those projects is, then, you know, we can find ways to tick off, like where we're going to get funds, to, to get those projects done.
Let's start by, go ahead, real quick, so this start by, go ahead, real quick.
Yeah, I mean.
And so what we're looking at was bridges, the fact of, you know, there's no way, if each one of those commissioners gets right at five hundred and fifty thousand, and those bridge project one is over seven hundred thousand, you would have to sit on it, and not do any paving to get one done, for two years. And, and, you know, you couldn't do that, you've got, there's three on major collection, but right now, needs to be replaced, that means that there could be no paving done in District One, for what, uh, what we figure, twelve years, twelve, fifteen years? Just, to save you money up to get those projects done, and that's the reason we reached out, on the federal level.
Tanya's very good at this, I just want, maybe, again, setting.
Well, no, I'm not, I'm not the best.
Listen, you got, you worked in DC.
I have experience, and I can do appropriation, I can do appropriations with my house list, but I, I'm not a grant writer, and grants are different than appropriations.
But you worked in DC for a long time, and you worked for, um.
I worked for Riley, my name is Congressman.
And you worked for Georgia.
I worked for a Georgia congressman, and I did his appropriations, and then I, then I actually was a lobbyist and did appropriations.
Okay.
And so we were at a loss, you know, I don't think any of us, we knew what to do, and it was like, um, I reached out, and.
Well, that's where you start, and they're there to help you, I mean, a lot of times, you don't really, you don't. I, I mean, the, the offices are there to help you through the process, you don't really, I mean, you need a ton of people to helping you, and you, you can do it, because they're there to serve your community, and, um, they want to see your priorities and what you want done, and having a plan put together with, okay, this year, I mean, this is, this is the severity of projects, especially with infrastructure, but then they also fund things other than infrastructure, there, there are other, you know, there's a rural's community, um, there's a community of, through USDA, there's a lot of funding through USDA for rural communities, um, uh, buildings, and projects through them, um, there's projects through SBA for business stuff, um, for entrepreneurs, you know, eventually, I would like, once we get the, the organization set up, I would like to eventually create a revolving loan fund through USDA to help businesses in our community, um, to help them with gap financing for projects, but, I mean, that's where I'll wanna go for it, but.
Good to have you on the board.
Well, I'm, you know, it's a lot of, a lot of useful years, it's years, lives.
Now, you, you worked for a lobbying company, too.
I did.
So, there was a period of time when we went to visit, and I don't think the county could afford, because there is a cost to something like that.
There is a cost to something, but it's not, it's not necessary.
Well, I mean, you know, you, you, you have to pay.
I have to, well, you know, a lot of big projects require big people and, and help, and, and this is something that you guys can do, and, and manage through working with your, your representatives, that's, they're there to help do that.
I know that we used, we used to go to a lot, and, and it, you, you, you were part of that, but then, like you said, it just kind of hit, and it broke, stopped, and it was just no sense, it made no sense to go travel anymore, you know?
But I will say, I think it, it means a lot for you to actually go to DC, I think you should go to DC, and, and develop that relationship with their staff, with Rogers, Senator Britt, and Senator Tuberville's staff, that is important for them to know who you are, and see your face every year, um, and then, tell them on the back end, you know, if you get money, what you did with it, sharing pictures, giving them credit, you know, those kind of things are very important to do, um, so, I mean, I think it's, it's important for you to continue to go.
I think so, too, and that ACCA through that NACO is also, I, I've been to that, that's, that's where Sonny put a big deal there, that getting the internet tax, he did a lot of work with other states, so, I mean, if you could be, you know, if we could afford it as a county, that'd be a great thing for y'all to go be a part of, too, 'cause you, you see a lot of stuff, you go, well, that don't even pertain to us, but you see what other, other places are doing.
And you see how other counties are running things, you might wanna change, I mean, there, there was a lot of bridge building when you went up there, but it just got to the point where, uh, they, they stopped all of that funding.
Thank you, Tanya.
You're welcome.
Um, alright, so, did we give, and we, do you have any other questions for our mission?
Yeah, could you give us update on the twenty two thousand inches?
Going well, I talked to Melissa, she came in last week, she and I worked on a couple of things together, and then, um, she and I worked some together remotely for the weekend, and then I talked to her again this morning, and the list, she keeps giving me a list of anything that's left, it's getting smaller and smaller each time, it's getting down, you just find the little details, um, and I'm pulling, I mean, working rest of the week on pulling some information for our pension sheet that we need to do for the, for the financials, and to make sure that fixed assets are reconciled, but it's just, this is just down to the, like me and Gritty, it's just down to the little details of what she wants to pull it up together, so, it, it looks like it's going well, I mean, I've been through it one time before with her, and I know that what we're down to is the things that we, the final parts of what we were doing before we had our audit last time, so, it looks well, I'm out next week, just so y'all know, I'm not in the office next week, that doesn't mean I won't work, it's, we don't, we're in the office next week, I had a planned week off, and, um, I've talked to her about that, too, so she knows I'll be working with her some during that week, too.
So you think we might get this to the state, uh, mid-December? So you think we might get this to the state, uh, mid-December?
Well, I mean, they gave us a deadline of letting them know that we are ready for the audit by the end of this year and I haven't gotten Melissa to say that it's gonna be earlier than that, cause you know, we all have to work together, so it's not just myself, I'm giving her everything that she's asking for as quickly as I possibly can. And she just says, and I thought, we'll make it, let's just keep turning along, that's what she keeps telling me, so. I'll just keep you updated as soon as I know.
Are you, are you also working on the twenty-three?
Yes.
Because the ladies from the Examiner's Office was wanting to do both at the same time.
Well, what they want to do is they want to get through twenty-two, they want to do it first, start going through that part first and then if everything is going well, they'll be able to step right into twenty-three. I don't see any problems with that, we are not ready, we're nowhere to the point where FY twenty-two is the twenty-three, but it's not going to be nearly as hard either. And, uh, just having everything reconciled like we are now and having, uh, got Tracy working on some of the clearing accounts and transfer counts, things will take a little while to get cleared up, he's working on that. So we're, we're working simultaneously on two years. So everything looks well, I mean, I'm, I'm sure that we're gonna make it, I don't see any reason why we would not at this point. It's just, it takes a long time to put it all together.
I'm just, I'm sure we make it.
It takes, it takes a couple of weeks once they get it, once we hand it to them, you know, when they start, when they come in and sit down and start doing their audit.
Right.
Takes a month to audit.
They'll be here that long, right? Well, just, just, what I'm saying is Terry, that way, I think it's gonna be an eye opener if anything that they might see as they're going through twenty-two that they can go back there and they say, oh, we better make sure we got this squared away on the twenty-three. I'd rather have that twenty-two as a stepping stone to make sure that we don't step in a hole with twenty-three.
And that's one reason why twenty-three is not as bad, is because if we find a problem in twenty-two, we're going ahead. If it's something that's been continuously needs to be, just either it's in the wrong object code or something to that effect, we're gonna fix it off, we don't stop and just do twenty-two and not go forward with it, so. Um, and that's have been a lot of, you know, getting everything reconciled and getting all the clearing accounts and just seeing how all the payable accounts get cleared out each year, so. I mean, this, this knowledge learned each time you did it.
Did, did, did Melissa say that, or did the person that's here, can you say that it's easier to, uh, on certain months, like, like twenty-two or twenty-three, that to work with her, like in March, April, May?
She hasn't mentioned a timeframe like that, I'm sure that it would, it makes sense that it would be easier for her, like in the spring, early spring. Uh, and as well as myself, for that matter.
Because everybody's logged down, so I'm just saying, and Terry's point was, yeah, I want to get all of it done and all of it covered. I'm just saying you'd have a lot better access for somebody that's doing the same job that you're doing. Where, like I always said, from before September, October, September, you're putting a budget together, then you're closing out the end of the year. Usually your best, in your world, your best time is probably gonna be somewhere at the end of February. And I just think that would be a free time for her and you to spend, be a little bit more one-on-one with you and her and Tracy.
And see, already just even, even this, even now, even November is much better than September and October. November has already lifted a load off of us and there's still some financials that we have to do for, um, one that's due in November and then one in December, but they're not nearly as time consuming as what we're working on right now, so. I know that her loads lifted a little bit too, but, um, she's been really responsive, she's been willing to come by. She sat with me for, um, one morning till, till about eleven-thirty, so she was here about eight till eleven-thirty one day last week. And we got a lot done in that few hours that she was here. If you know, you've got that little small window to work together, you'll get a lot done. And then like I said, I, actually she called me, she'll call me on her way in to her office. That's an opportunity that she and I both can talk. Well, promise this morning I was about a mile from Tricum, so I pulled over on the side before I hit Tricum and lost her. But I sat there and talked to her and went through my notes with her, so, cause that was a good opportunity for us to catch up. But, um, we're working together, family, I can put things aside like, um, checking payroll and things like that now because I've got a person that can do that with me, um, I'm able to put, do more hands on with the financials. But I, I think it's going well, I can't tell you a date, cause like I said, it is back and forth. She finds something, then I find something and we just work it out between us. So it all looks well right now for finishing.
Any other questions?
Mr. Estes, so I have a couple of agreements that I need to get permission to go into, I guess. Um, Catlin County is gonna be doing a paving project up on Old Gordon Road at some point next year. Uh, Laura has talked with their commission about coming on over on the Cleveland County side, basically from the county line to the railroad bridge up there to sort and extending that project and that's reimbursing them for a portion of Cleveland County. Um, so that would be, uh, forty thousand, eighty dollars and thirty-four cents is what the estimate is. So we'd be looking at amending the gas tax, the county transportation land, we pay gas tax money to cover that. Um, so we're ready, we better be.
Y'all want that on the agenda? You busy, sir? Sam, then you good at that?
I'm good.
Okay.
Uh, next agreement is, uh, with the USDA Wildlife Services, this is, these are controlled. I got two different locations right now that we're having a go at, two weeks, not to leave the dams out. We've tried some trapping, tried some eradication, it's just not working. Um, the USDA Wildlife Services is a group, it's a stable organization and they do off trapping for the state L T and if you can. It's a, it's a real call type situation, um, you set up a little budget with them, with just five thousand dollars. It's a cost on them, they, they don't have a budget, they just, when they come out, you're paying them for what their cost is while they're out. Um, but they get, um, easements with landowners and they'll go back and out of the park, they need to go back until they have a public tenant care for it. We can't do nothing, we're just working on it. So that's money that I've got covered in my gas, when I'm not able to bring anything over and just they're able to go and go and agree.
Consent?
Consent.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
Wait, uh, the water on saving cities, it's, it's still working?
We ain't had any issues with it.
They have those payments out.
Yeah, that seems to be, something for the moment, so. Um, and then the last thing I got, John's, uh, litter crew has met through all of our trash bags that we got in town, probably we got fifteen boxes back in March. Um, just trying to figure out what we need to do with trash bags. Is that Sheriff's Department gonna pick that up or I need to leave?
What about paper?
What does that mean?
From the, from the, were they not coming out of the bottom?
For waste, or did it's a dollar from the, or you had a lot?
Well, the, the dollars for construction on the centers, it's not really, I mean, it could have, I'm just saying.
I mean, what would get that from the tar?
It's, it's, it's not in there, it's not anything that we're gonna need to, we've always had surplus of trash bags. A little bit of time on the big amount of money here and there.
I just don't like that we didn't cover that, cause we're having them come out to our, our area, I don't think it should come out of the shelves, but.
That's, that's, that's what I was trying to figure out, I need your trash bags.
Yeah, that's.
And then next year, next March, we don't request, we don't request more, I don't even know, we get, I don't request more actually.
But James didn't want to pick them up now, didn't she? Didn't she go pick them up?
We, we picked up fifteen boxes.
That's a lot that I picked up last Friday.
Which is double what we picked up in the past, we only been getting about seven boxes.
You here?
That's it.
Question? Uh, hey, I don't know if y'all know this or not, tomorrow's in the way. Have you ever been watching TV? Have you been in a hole somewhere? Uh, Sam helped us today, me and, and Fred and, and, uh, we, uh, went out and Lane went out to help, appreciate Lane's help today, so getting everything ready. So we're prepared, everything is coming back to the courthouse tomorrow night, so I'm really excited, cause this is my last time. And the sheriff and everybody's been really good working with, thank y'all, appreciate it. Y'all have any questions about the election or anything, concerned about that?
Time is over.
Seven, seven is seven, seven is seven. Time, um, should go pretty quick tomorrow, I don't see any big issues, the ballot is pretty, 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 yeah, it's pretty quick. But there may be long lines, but it should not, it should be moving.
How long is it to you then?
Huge, it's a tale of four hundred, I think, is that right, is that John's stat? Yeah, he told me last week on Thursday, I think it was four, over four hundred, absolutely, that's huge, huge. Um, alright, any, any other things that y'all want to consider putting on the agenda for Wednesday? You'll briefly go over what we got coming up.
Sure. Um, new business, we have a resolution for the legislation for the salary increase and part of a resolution for equipment. Now, considering agenda, we have the backhoe, the roadie commissioner, um, accept the evaluation that our human resource officers proposed, uh, change the voting dates, amend the transportation plan for the Catlin County project and allow our engineer to enter contract with the USDA for the tracking project.
Okay. That's how much, you got everything, we talked about that.
Can, can we get Emily to come up with the revenue commissioners, what, what kind of money we talking about on that? Because you're gonna have to adjust her salary on top of the two years to, to get, to figure, put in a resolution.
Yeah, my base pay will almost be the seventy thousand because of the correction. So that legislation will cut me off.
Well, I understand that, I'm just saying.
Yeah, I already got the numbers for it.
It's her, yeah.
Yeah, I know. All right, Emily and I have been talking.
Yeah, I just want to put the resolution.
You want the base pay for the, the, our base pay compared to the, the other ones?
Oh, how much the two years is gonna really doggone, and then you're gonna have to adjust her salaries, what that difference is gonna be.
And, and I will need to know that amount before I finish collecting so that I can disperse that amongst the people that would have owed that salary in the day, so that's not gonna come out of the general fund, so. I needed that, I actually needed that before the, um, the budgets went in, that's why I pressed y'all so hard up to this point. So we'll just have to make a, a budget correction, so.
But all, all of this is spread out everywhere now.
Oh, yeah, that's why I said, yeah, it wouldn't, I mean, you're.
You're not on the hook.
That fifteen, that twenty-three thousand was probably only gonna cost y'all fifteen hundred. But, uh, now it's the two years, so you're, you're just a couple hundred dollars out of the general fund, so. But the sheriff, we will come out with your, so we'll figure out about it.
This resolution, there's no, who's sheriff?
No, that resolution, I'm talking about my base pay is already at that.
We're talking about regulations from the league.
Real quick, just again, Sheriff, you gonna have, that's good for you? You good, Ms. Holder, you?
I'm good.
Tanya, you good? Alright, next Wednesday, mid-four thirty, y'all dressing up, looking good, cleaned up. All lines good, y'all ready to go? Alright, your turn.